And I have seen it where balls have gone in as I've coached and I coached in AAA this year with my younger son. About balls do go there. We want to stop that. We definitely do. We want to make it safer. So, and they will happen, but generally they're up and back and everybody, hey, heads up. You know, and that happens in every single field. Every field that we play on, it doesn't matter which one. But we want to try to mitigate that as much as possible.
I didn't bring any notes with me. One final thing I wanted to say was after I got wind of the proposal, I went down to four different Little League games and was kind of hand counting people. And I had on the low end forty-nine, on the high end sixty-three among those four games. So I just thought I'd throw that out there. Thank you.
Could you tell me a little bit about the charter? I haven't heard that there was a charter.
Uh, yes. From what I understand, um, it was a charter that was to be adhered to for a certain period of time. I don't know all the details. And then, or the land would be reverted back to Stanford.
Yeah, it's not a charter, it's a will. And actually, there, I think, was past confusion about it. Quite frankly, I've read the will. I don't find it to have any provisions that prevent any athletic sport from occurring in the park. At least not now. It could have been something in the past that I can't find or I'm not sure.
Yeah, it was part of our park, uh, part of the, uh, the information we got when we were on the commission. I will try to, you know, take it out. It's been a few years since I've been on the commission, but, uh, I remember reading that when we were going over the, uh, the original issuance in two thousand. So, I can't get specific on it.
It may have been something in the past. I don't believe it's something that's occurring right now.
Right.
The charter, as you call it, letter-
Will, whatever.
Will, whatever you want, um, is no longer in effect.
That's to my understanding. I would defer to anybody on the commission that would have better knowledge of that. But that was my understanding. And that issue came up with the talk about the library in the park as well.
Well, the terms of the will specifically say that it can be used for recreational purposes. I can't think of any other recreational purpose that would be more recreational than Little League baseball.
But I think I remember the, uh, the phrase organized sports. I, because that was one of the things that we specifically brought up. Now, I mean, for the record, I think Little League in the park has been great. I think seeing that in the summer, going down, watching a few of the games, I think the overall, what it brings to the atmosphere in its current state has been terrific. And, and, and I'm glad that it was approved eventually. I mean, they, council went against our recommendation, but, uh, when you see what has happened in the park, I think it's been a good thing in its current state. I, I love seeing the informality of it with the lawn chairs and the picnics and, and I like seeing that personally. And I think it suits the nature of Holbrook Palmer Park. I don't think that this does.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next.
My name is Hannah Reuben, and, um, I guess, um, I am sorry that the will remove the chicken water backfield to baseball, Little League baseball, because I think it's ugly. Um, I think anything that isn't a tree or grass, anything in more structure in the park would be ugly. If you're going to get the structure being agreed, one with the trees, um, I, logic just suggests that once this is built, we're going to have more and more use, we're going to have informal use, we're going to have people trying to sleep there at night because it's covered. Um, I think, uh, I like the volunteerism and unity and, uh, and positive family experiences that the present state of Little League promotes. However, I think this is overboard. It's ugly. It's taking away from the free, uh, peaceful enjoyment of the park. It is over serving a small group of people. The tennis court people are starting to raise money to resurface their, their courts on their own. And I think this is just another encroachment of these small groups of people, taking away the use of the park for a small group of people. Um, people donated money to get the tennis courts filled, but maybe they're old enough and they're forgotten. There's a rusty plaque, name, it's a lot of pressure. But this is really hurting and it's ugly and it's going to draw a lot from the people. It's going to replace, it's going to create parking problems and it's a lot of it is built in the park. Which I would be willing to straighten and bring out with the authority of the community because it's a park. So I seriously object to expanding the baseball activities at the park, which this will do. And also request that the old chicken wire backstop that's already there be taken down as was promised and not kept up to pace.
Is there any questions? Thank you. Max? Speaker?
I'd like to make a few more remarks. First, um, baseball parks can be beautiful. I've climbed Half Dome, I've, uh, been, I'm a backpacker, I love nature. But last night I was at AT&amp;T Park and that's one of the most beautiful places I've ever been. This is a beautiful baseball park. This is a baseball park that's worthy of our beautiful community. And it would serve a lot of people. Some of the best friends I've had, I've made since I've moved here five years ago were made because of Little League baseballs. Menlo-Afferton Little League has been a great partner with the town over the last ten years. We've invested ten thousand dollars plus a year in the maintenance of Holbrook Palmer Park. At least a hundred thousand dollars, and if you consider our labor, our own volunteers' labor, it's well upwards of two hundred thousand dollars. My understanding about the backstop is that it was left in place, at least in part, because people like to use it throughout the year for pickup softball games and things like that. So it's not just Little League using that ball field. Um, and then finally, I want to, uh, I think it was Ms. Davey mentioned earlier, something about Little League being gender specific. And I wanted to, uh, address that because we welcome female participants in our league, we encourage it, and we have female participation in our league. I received an email today from a seventeen-year-old girl who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight because she's traveling this summer. But she asked that I read this email to the commission. Her name is Hannah Rubin. As I mentioned, she's seventeen, she's an Afferton resident. And this is what she said. "As I start college applications, every question seems to be a variation of what shaped my identity or why I am the person I am today. And I realize now that everything points back to Little League. Though I retired my mitt at age thirteen, now as I begin to embark on my senior year, I look back at those eight years of T-ball, pitching machine, and kid pitch and understand how much they meant to me. Menlo-Afferton Little League is the reason I am the person, athlete, teammate, and friend I am today. I started T-ball when I was five, and not only have I kept my Yankees hat, but I've kept the friendships that were originally formed from that team. I still share the bond with my big red pitching machine, pitching machine team about when we won the championship game on a sacrifice bunt, and I could name you every member of that team. Little League taught me more than just how to throw a curve ball or spit sunflower seeds, but I learned how to have the confidence to be one of the only girls in the majors and, uh, and pitch that third strike despite my playful taunts from the opposing team. Because of the support from my coaches and teammates and the environment of the diamond, I learned how to perform under pressure, get over the disappointment of failing, and how to be a team player, all skills that have proved to be useful in, in high school and will certainly be useful in college. Today I keep my earned game balls proudly displayed on my windowsill and picture, pictures of teams and teammates lovingly displayed on my wall. I cannot fully describe how much Little League has meant to me, and I hope that every kid gets the chance to have the memories that I have had and have baseball shape their lives in the way that it did to me. I can say with pride I throw like a girl, a girl that can throw a perfect fastball and slider because of Menlo-Afferton Little League." This, this plan, this field, will give kids the opportunities that Hannah had. It, it's, it'll give grandparents in wheelchairs the opportunity to go watch their granddaughter play Little League baseball. And I would ask that you do what you have to do to help us get it approved. Thank you.
Any questions? Oh, my comment is from my younger son, playing during his seventies. Three girls were the best players.
Yeah, that's often the case. Thank you. The team and girls are both good girls. You know, the team and girls.
All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? If not, uh, we'll close the hearing and we'll go to, uh, Board Special. William, I'm going to ask you to read up.
I dare, but I have nothing to say.
All right. Christie?
Well, you know, just being Afferton, I regret that we have but one park. You know, it'd be nice if we had a park for our library and a park for our baseball and a park to walk our dogs in, but we have one and it must serve everyone. We have a diverse community of people here. We have kids, we have, you know, elderly people, and we've got the one park. I think we need to make it work for everyone. Um, you know, I'm tired as a resident of riding on coattails in Menlo Park and our other neighboring communities. My kids play these sports and it's always somewhere else. Um, I think that, you know, we need to contribute as a community and this would be one step towards doing that. Um, this proposal is, you know, a win-win. It's a really nice facility. I'm tired of schlepping my stuff, um, out there, sitting, you know, out in the field on my own chairs. Um, I think it would be nice to have a shared spot. Um, you know, if somebody wants to give you a Cadillac, we shouldn't complain that we only need a Yugo, you know? Anyway, my comments concerning the actual program of the building are, I think it's really nice that the seating is together in the back. I think it promotes the ideals of Little League in that it's non-competitive. You sit with the families from the other opposing team and you enjoy the game. I think otherwise you end up sitting, uh, us against them, and unfortunately some fathers get a little too into the game of baseball occasionally and, you know, this could curtail that. I think, as I said, it lends itself to the ideals of Little League nicely. Um, my take off on seating, you know, eighteen inches is not a lot of bench space. If we could put two hundred people in there at eighteen inches, I want more room. Realistically, it's a good size for seventy-five people with little kids. You spread out, you have blankets, the kids are coloring, stuff is going on. Nobody wants to occupy eighteen inches of bench space. It's just not a reality in America. Um, I think the safety features of this field are a huge improvement and enhancement. I like the improved backstop. I, you know, we played on this field this last season. I've seen several balls go onto the tennis courts. Yeah, they're foul balls, but it, it's not a good thing. Um, I think the outfield fence is also an improvement. There are always dog walkers and people throwing to their dog who are out there in the middle of the outfield. Occasionally, there are kids that can reach out there, um, and it's hard to get the attention of the dog people. So I think the outfield fence would be nice. Um, improving the field as well so that right field is an automatic home run alley is good and bad, depending on how you look at it, like if kids know how to play the field. Um, let's see. To address the parking issue, um, you know, EIR, which for the library that we'll hear about later indicates that the peaks for these different things don't overlap. So even if there is a library, the peak for the library is not the same time as the ballpark usage. And I don't see that there would be any increase in the ballpark usage. And as far as the coordination of the field use, I think the Park and Rec Committee really needs to step forward to start coordinating some of this stuff. Um, you know, it is an issue, there are all kinds of events that are going on in this park. I'd like to see increased use of this park, and I don't see why it wouldn't. There are more and more families moving into this community, and there's just going to be more use of the park. So some way to mitigate and negotiate between the disparate users and to figure out, you know, what works for everyone is good. And lastly, I just want to say that if this were a Dames project, we wouldn't even be having, um, public hearings. It would just appear one day and we would all look at it. Case in point is the playground that's out there, just showed up one day. I don't remember any kind of formal hearing or process. I mean, this is another thing that the Parks and Rec Committee should look at. Um, but it seems that Dames projects just appear and obviously that's a, must be a disaster because we've had issues with maintenance and otherwise on those. And kindly appears that baseball is willing to stand behind these improvements, to maintain fields, to maintain bathrooms, and other things. So, those are my thoughts.
Joe?
You may have a question.
Well, this is, this is a major change, not more than an improvement, this new construction. And it is going to change the way that we look. Um, we have forced EIR on the library. We can't find the EIR for the original use of the park by the Little League code. So one thing I would like to recommend is somehow we go back and find that EIR or make a new draft EIR for this one. Uh, this is a significant change to our park and to our community, and I think you ought to look at it very carefully. Um, very much has been said about safety issues and those can be addressed another way, but I think, um, I still have some unanswered questions, but I would like to do a further study on the impacts, uh, of this proposal, uh, park overall.
Wow, that was short. No, I have time with me. Um, so this is an unusual thing to come before the Planning Commission because normally we are not allowed to be arbitrary and capricious or have, you know, we don't have a whole lot of discretion. Usually we're interpreting the building code, we're interpreting the Heritage Code of residents or ordinance. And, you know, this is unusual because City Council has asked us to look into it. It's not, it, it's relatively open. So unlike most issues, we have the chance to sort of look a little deeper into it and not necessarily standards to, uh, to, to look against. When I look at this, at this proposal, there's a few things that I think are sort of beyond our, our, our ability to review, and that is, is that years ago a decision was made to put the baseball park in the, in the baseball dining, in the pot. So I think that's sort of given there is a level of development in that area and also sort of that is a given. So I think that there's a large part of this project which I think is simply maintenance. So, you know, upkeep on the, on the, on the field, you know, redoing the, the grass, you know, to some extent redoing the dugouts and the fence and things like that. I sort of see those as a continuation of a decision that's already been made, and so I don't think that we necessarily should be, should be changing that. However, you know, the park itself is zoned as open space. And, you know, the, the definition of open space is, you know, relatively restrictive. And so, you know, if this is the zoning of our park, then I believe that what we should be recommending should be sort of governed by the, the, the zoning, which is basically that we should minimize the amount of permanent structure that's there in keeping with the use that you're doing. Obviously, if you're going to have a baseball field there, you're going to have to have something there. But I think that, you know, the balancing we need to do is the zoning of open space, the use of other people in the park with a previous decision to, to use part of the park as a baseball dining. So, you know, with that in mind, you know, going through the various things that are, that are suggested, you know, these would sort of be my recommendations. You know, redoing the field and, you know, I think that's in keeping with previous decisions, and I think we should go forward with that. Uh, a lot of the fencing along the sides, I think is also in keeping with those decisions that have been made in the past and for safety reasons, having over, over line of, of home play and maybe a little bit of extension of the fence going down to right field or left field. Line seems like a reasonable thing to have. Redoing the dugouts seems to be in keeping, putting a roof over the dugout seems to be in keeping, uh, a great impediment to it. In terms of foul posts, that seems to be an impediment to other people's use, particularly if they're permanent. What I would suggest is foul posts, yes, as long as you can remove them. You know, the, the bases themselves usually have little plugs that you can put in and then put cap over. So I would rather see something that, that you could take that out. The scoreboard also becomes then a problem because it would have a very limited use, and if it was permanent, it would be a problem. And I don't think, you know, as my parents always told me, there are needs and there are wants. And I think that's a want, and I can certainly understand why you want that, but I don't think it's a need. You don't need a scoreboard to play baseball. Um, all my fifth games so far, none of them have ever had a scoreboard and didn't seem to interfere with the game. In terms of the outfield fence, I was hoping that it would be a little bit easier to take on and, on and off because my recommendation would be outfield fence, yes, but you remove it after each game. That becomes, if it really does take an hour and a half to take it out, then, then that's a problem. But if, you know, other field users effectively lose the use of that portion of the field for the entire time that that outfield fence is up there, my recommendation is either it's, either it's taken out on a more regular basis or, or you can't put it up there. And then that leaves sort of the, you know, the, the more permanent structures behind. In terms of storage, you know, my recommendation would be, I understand that if you have needs for storage, it would be nice to be, to be close. I don't think it needs to be there. I think there's a storage shed over behind the tennis courts. I would recommend that it get put back there, which already has a permanent structure and it's only, you know, twenty feet further down there. Restrooms, I think is going to be a problem of both maintenance and, you know, construction. And there, there are, um, there are restrooms there. There's a lot of fields, at least that my kids play on, don't have rest, permanent restrooms. So, I'm not sure that that actually has to be there. So I would recommend basically that the storage in the, in the, um, the bathrooms not be put in place because they're sort of permanent. And in terms of the grandstands, I think two innings is probably too big because, uh, I, maybe one or two games in a year, you need too many people, but you, you don't need it as, as a permanent, um, piece. And I'm sort of on both sides on whether you have grandstands at all because I hear that people would say that it's, uh, you know, it makes it a lot easier for people to watch the game, but it also is a, is a permanent, um, uh, point there. So I think that if we were to recommend a grandstand there, I would say keep them open so that you can see through to see if somebody's behind it. But on balance, I think it's, it's probably a, a need, not a, or a want, not a need. Um, again, my kids have played and there hasn't been, um, grandstands and it hasn't, you know, interfered with the, with the experience. And then I think I've gone through all the things in the proposal. I guess the only other thing, I'll just sort of respond to a comment that Christie made about sort of Afferton not doing its part on, on, uh, on, uh, on fields. And I sort of jotted down, you know, where at least in my experience, the baseball was played in Little League and starting with T-ball, at least my kids play on Laurel and Los Alamos, which are both in Afferton. In Coach Pitch, it was Enzo Laurel, which is played from Afferton. In Single A, it was German American, which is Menlo Park. In Double A, it was Los Alamos, which is Afferton. And I understand from the discussions here, the AAA is played at Holbrook Palmer Park, which is in Afferton. Enzo, which is in Afferton. And Little Oaks, which is in Menlo Park. And I understand Burgess is played, or Majors is played in Burgess. So I think on balance, Afferton's actually providing an awful lot of facilities, so I'm not so sure that it's an issue of, of, you know, doing the park. But, um, in terms of recommendations, I've sort of gone through them by lines, but that's what my recommendation would be.
Thank you. Well, my own feeling is that there's many good act, aspects of, of this plan. Right now, though, uh, the park, as I understand it, is to, um, low-key, um, informal, uh, type of use of the land. Structures are to be limited, if not denied. I see the structures here as a major problem. Certainly the, uh, maintenance of the field, the improvement there, no one can argue against that. But I would much, much rather assume a, rather, instead of a grandstand, some sort of capacity mound on the side that could seat people and be easy to move, um, in and out of. But, um, I think our, our question here is, this is really falling to our daily way. I'm going to ask Lisa, tell us what is our objective and what can we do, um, in, in handling this? Because this is really not our project.
Um, I did provide a few alternatives to try to help guide you a little bit in the Stafford Court, but I think in general, um, I think the council just wanted to have an opportunity for a community meeting, uh, try to get some input into the process and then have your evaluation of the project as well. So if you were to pass a motion, which what I'm hearing is maybe not recommending the project in its entirety to the City Council, but maybe recommending some aspects of the project, I would take that up to the City Council and then they would decide if they wanted to refer a Park and Rec Committee or start working, um, more closely with Little League to develop the MOU, um, to define what the project is and the maintenance responsibilities.
You've heard, uh, what the staff has told us. I think we've all stressed our own personal preferences. Uh, do we have any, any answers?
I got a question. Lisa, you mentioned somewhere in the Stafford Court about conditional use for it. That is in our purview, is that?
Correct. If, if this was something that, um, I think Little League would appreciate, you know, some direction at this point. We've been going through the process for quite some time, and I think they've been encouraged through the process for quite some time. So if this is something that the Planning Commission would not want to support, this is a good time to give them that information. But if it is something you want to support, maybe a modified, um, project, give them that direction and have it come back as a conditional use for it, um, that's certainly an option.
I know a question on that one. We, we talked about this, I guess, some time ago, and we said, you know, we were interested in hearing specific things from the other user groups, and we're not hearing those things. They didn't answer or, or, or really contest if something went wrong. We should hear from those folks, what they think about this.
No, we have them across.
Yeah. And I, I, when I was on the field, uh, the day before yesterday, the, the cross trainees were on the field all the place. They were using all the fields.
Well, uh, does the, uh, Commissioner wish to take actions? Uh, we've held a hearing and we've asked by the council.
As I understand it, City Council basically asked us, like Lisa said, to sort of provide a forum for people to, to, to say things and then, so those things can go into the record for their consideration and then, you know, pass the Planning Commission for a recommendation. So I would, what I would suggest is that we try to reach some sort of consensus for what do we want to recommend, I think. You know, if there is absolutely no consensus, then we might have no recommendation for that. I think it's sort of not doing a, it's different. And so what I would recommend is we try and reach a consensus on, you know, do we want to say we're not going to make, make a recommendation because we think that we need an EIR? Are we going to say we would like to support the proposal as presented? Recommend if the council supported as presented? Do we want to say we want to support the proposal with the following changes? We're not making any decisions. Ultimately, the City Council is the one who's going to make the decisions. So all we do is make the recommendations and then they'll decide if we're going to go or not. But I think that they've asked us, what do you think?
No, would anybody want to start?
I, I started with mine. I just, I think exactly what each of the things was, but I don't know whether anybody else agrees with it.
Well, go ahead.
Question of procedure. An idea, is it possible, because you've been taking very good notes, to write out what the, um, the various issues, the, the grandstands, the republic, and then write a sense of what you picked up from what you've heard and then circulate it amongst us so that at the next meeting, we could agree that that's our sense of the, of the commission?
That would be a very interesting Brown Act violation, however.
Why not? The fact it would be illegal is a great idea.
Circulate, sorry, circulate to each member, so that then at the next meeting...
I think you would like it agendized at the next meeting. Their position memo, agendized at the next meeting.
Well, that position could be informed at the staff report. Those, those are very...
You might be, some issues are, you can do a matrix.
I mean, take it out of the notes somewhere if you're trying to...
That, yeah. Me, Mr.?
I mean, I would rather, if I stand, make a recommendation wherever to recommend and move on. I mean, I think Little League needs to move on. City Council probably wants to see this, this has been out there since, since last September. I mean, if we're, so my personal preference would be to go through the various things, say yea or nay on recommendation.
Well, that's basically what Lisa would be doing.
Why don't we just do it now?
Well, I don't know, that has to be specific. Can't we just say that, you know, I can all agree that something needs to move forward at the park, and the council could determine what that is, and we held a public meeting and...
No, we've been at this over two hours now, we've got a big thing ahead of us, and if we fool around and do this, now we're going to get a horse put together that'll look like a camel. So let's let Lisa put these options to us, so we can see them at our next meeting and have a look at them, and get on with our business tonight. There's no rush in this, this has been going on for over a year and a half now, and why come to this judgment in one, two-hour meeting? I think we ought to take a good, close look at our options at the end.
Okay. You want to make motion to that effect?
Yeah, a good, close look at our options at the end committee. How's that? I move.
Direct the staff to put that...
Yeah, direct the staff and present our options to us at our next, at your meeting.
So are you asking for, could the proposal to be broken down into pieces and summarize what, what?
We're actually going to take one each one.
So outfield fence, inner, scoreboard, inner, that sort of thing?
Okay, we have, William has a second discussion. Okay, all those in favor of motion? Aye. All who's against?
Aye.
Aye is against?
Correct.
Okay, by a three to two vote, the motion is carried. So we'll be back. I think that concludes. Thank you.
Just take two minutes back.
Yeah, I'm going to take a break.